Good evening. We are going to start first the tax rate hearing. We're going to call this meeting to order. Is there anyone that would like to speak on this tax hearing at this time? Anyone want to speak on this tax rate hearing? One more time, anyone who want to come up and speak on the tax rate hearing? Boy, there nobody's jumping up. Mr. Pawbar, would you like to give us little details on the tax rate?
Sure, President Steele. We hold a tax rate hearing every year at this time of year as the board needs to adopt the rate by September 1 and to deliver to the county clerks. So we'll do that again this year. And this year's levy, we did publish in The Globe, the budget that will be supported by the levy a week or two ago. We placed that in The Globe and the board will consider this evening to adopt a tax levy for this current year. So that way we can meet that September 1 deadline. But yes, now is the time during this hearing to make comment about the levy. The levy this year will reflect what the voters asked for last April in passing the bond issue of $62 million that will help us complete our building projects for the three building sites to supplement the insurance proceeds, the FEMA dollars we intend to receive, and some donations. The $62 million bond issue is going to supplement those projects so that the community has the buildings they expect and demand and we can educate our students through there for the next number of decades. So we're glad for that vote. During the campaign leading up to that vote in April, we did make it very clear to the public that there would be a levy increase of 35 cents from the current levy. And that 35 cents will pay retire the debt for principal and interest on those bonds over 20 years. That's why we have to have the 35 cent increase. There's nothing in the levy increase that's going to go toward operating increase. It's only for the debt service payoff of principal and interest for that additional debt to build the buildings over 20 years. So that will be reflected in this year's levy. The levy was $3.31 and we're proposing a 35 cent increase to $3.66.
One more time, anyone like to speak at this tax rate hearing? We will now move on and adjourn to the regular session board meeting. This time roll call, Ms. Waldo.
Mr. Steele.
President.
Mr. Landis.
Present.
Mr. Kimbrough.
Here.
Mr. Flowers.
Here.
Ms. Sharp.
Present.
Ms. Sticklett.
Here.
Mr. Will Thompson.
Here.
Let us all stand for the pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Just let everyone know, we have new sound system tonight, so please bear with us if there's any technical difficulties. Turn it over to Dr. Huff now, or no, Dr. Bessett, or I'm sorry, district showcase.
District showcase, exactly. We have a lot of showcasing things this evening and the first one that we'd like to showcase are some students. And so I'd invite Ivan Ober, our teacher at South Middle School, to come forward first. So if you would like to come up and talk to us about what you brought with us for tonight.
As part of the gifted program at South Middle School and across the other two middle schools in our district, we've chosen National History Day as one of the best ways to teach our students research and to help them delve very deeply into a topic of their choice. And so over a period of several months, students have self-selected a topic in history. This last year was based on revolution reaction and reform in history. And they had to research a topic, write a thesis statement, and they approved that thesis statement through research on secondary and primary sources. And then they have a choice of five different types of presentations they can make, either a written history paper, a website, a documentary, dramatic presentation, or a standalone exhibit. And so we entered at Missouri Southern and our students won 18 out of 27 places to state at Missouri Southern. And when we got to state, we had three students qualified to go to Nationals. And so I brought those three young ladies with me tonight that got to go to Nationals. And I'd like to introduce them. Okay, first is Maggie Womper and Kamel.
Stand up, let's.
Maggie and Keaton did a group documentary on translation of the Bible into English. And it did win second place at state and that's why they got to go to Nationals. And then Autumn Abed did her website on the Idaho many and his role in the overthrow the Shah of Iran. And Autumn won first place in the nation. And so this was a competition across the world actually of over half a million students. And so this is quite an accomplishment for Joplin to interview students and I'm so proud of them.
Mr. Ober does a lot of extra time after school to help his students, as do the teachers that are doing that at the other middle schools as well. But Mr. Ober has a very great track record for success in addition to that. And I think these girls probably benefited a lot from you and they had a lot of hard work too, so great deal. I think President Steele, do you have something for these ladies?
Come on girls, we do. And while the girls are coming up, Mr. Ober, you may want to join them. You know, Mr. Ober was Golden Apple teacher, I believe, this year too, is that right, Mr. Ober? And I can speak on behalf, as a parent, my daughter's in his class and she has been talking about History Day for weeks prior to even the start of school, so they take it real serious.
We want to tell a little bit about the trip.
Well, we spent a lot of time in the car.
Anything else?
Where did you go?
Washington DC.
Washington DC. What did you do while you were in Washington DC?
We toured the Capitol and we went Smithsonian.
What was your most favorite thing about getting to go to Washington DC?
Toured the Capitol, probably.
Did you mean even famous?
I don't think.
They're going to be the famous ones. What grade?
Seven.
Okay. Barbie?
Nine.
Nine. So will you be able to compete again next year?
Yes.
Have you already started on your project?
Yes.
Good answer. And what's your next project going to be on?
I'm doing Rosie the Riveter.
Oh, cool.
And I'm thinking about doing Eugenics.
Eugenics? What is that?
Oh, gosh.
You're trying this today.
You said a word.
It's the like select breeding of people or the discouragement of breeding people who have mental or physical disabilities and yeah.
Okay. And what's our ninth grader doing?
I have no idea.
I might mention Autumn also won a $1,000 cash prize and a college scholarship.
Awesome. That's great.
Once again, congratulations. President Steele?
Thank you for a good job. President Steele?
Yes.
I don't think this is conclusive evidence that girls are smarter than boys.
You want to compete with them?
Thank you, girls.
Congratulations. And for our second part of the showcase, I think we'll be inviting up our transportation department. And so I think Kent is here, Kent Larson, and Dave Pettit. I think are both of you guys coming up and introducing the rest of the crew.
You know, I remarked that in the hallway a while ago, I don't think I've ever seen Dave in a suit before.
He's looking awash.
Wow, cool. I hope I can talk. You both look sharp.
So do you have some other folks with you?
We do. I guess we can bring them up now or we could do a little bit of a description of some of the things that we've accomplished. I'd like to thank the board for inviting us here this afternoon, this evening. It's wonderful time. We've had a very, very, very busy summer. A lot of work, a lot of hard work, a lot of training, and a lot of teamwork. And we are here to celebrate the transportation department today. And that being said, I guess I'm going to turn it over to David Pettit to give us some statistics of some of the accomplishments the transportation team has gotten past this summer. Dave is the Assistant Director of Building Grounds and Transportation and he's going to give us a little overview and introduce the staff.
Okay. Yes, again, thank you all for having us this evening. As you know, the tornado presented several challenges to the school district and transportation was definitely one of them. We had difficulty determining where students were, when they were there, and how many. And so we took those challenges and in the past year, we've used the team concept to accomplish things that had you asked me pre-tornado, we could ever do, I would tell you no, or at least with difficulty. And we have accomplished a lot of great many things for summer school last year as well as for the start of the school year last fall. Just give you a few statistics that may catch you up with where we actually are. Last year, we had 96 buses, 10 of which were leased. We have those same buses again this year. Last year, we traveled over 1 million miles in buses and hauled about 3,200 students. We worked with several other districts in transporting students that were homeless or displaced. Those were Neochow, Diamond, Granby, Carthage, Webb City, Carl Junction, Galena, and Seneca. And we took care of making sure that those students were able to continue to attend school in Joplin. And those other districts worked hand in hand with us and I'm very appreciative to them being part of our team as well. I am thankful to point out that this year, we only have one out of district student. We're able to take care of that student with one of our existing three FEMA routes. And so that's a good sign that our folks are getting back into permanent housing and we're thankful for that. As Kent mentioned, we had some extensive training, Versatrans, which is our software program that we use. We had five people spend three intensive days in training, learning how to make Versatrans work for us. Instead of just working along with the program, we became experts, so to speak, at that. And in doing that, we were able to rework all of our routes this summer to seek to try to find efficient ways to transport our students so that we could drop the amount of time they're waiting for the bus, the amount of time they're on the bus, and also to help us get them to school in plenty of time. We're hoping that with those efficiencies, that we can drop approximately 12% of the time that we're spent in our buses and approximately 18% of our mileage. We're hoping that that will come to be that way. It looks like preliminary wise, that we have more students that we're busing this year than we have in the past. We have several buses that are running at a very high capacity, which is good for efficiency. We've had to do some maneuvering around to make sure that we cover all those students. So I would anticipate with those early indications that our bus number ridership will be up this year. State funding, which we will all be looking at closely and how the tornado has affected us. As far as state funding, we reach maximum state funding if our efficiency rating is 104% or less, which sounds contrary to what you would anticipate, but 104% or less is for maximum state funding. We had been trending down with that. The last computation that state had given us was a 91%, but that takes into account the previous year, not where we're at now. 91% where we're trending down means that not only are we receiving the maximum state funding, but we're also putting money in our own pocket because we are running more efficient than the state average. We want to continue that. I look for the tornado to affect that number somewhat and hopefully it won't affect it too much. One of the main things that we want to point out to you is that our safety that we have taken care of this year, we received a 100% passing rate from the Missouri Highway Patrol, which is fantastic considering that we had 96 buses that we brought in and had inspected. And so we're very proud of that and thankful for the opportunity to serve the school district and to serve the students of our district. And if I might, I would like to introduce a few folks that I brought with me this evening, part of our team. They're just representative of our team because our team is pretty large, but I wanted to bring them and have them come up and join me now. I have Diana Haynes. She is a secretary and dispatcher.
I think she's in a famous video.
And she is. She is.
And for those Dave that haven't been over there to listen to her dispatch, I wouldn't want that job. She keeps them in line.
She does a good job. We have David Logan, who is also a secretary and dispatcher. We have Peggy Sees, who is a bus driver and bus driver trainer. We have Tim Wright, who is a bus driver and bus driver trainer. And then I've asked driver Tom Kofor to come. He is representing 90 other drivers. And then also Tanya Judd is representing 30 aides who work for the district as well.
Great job. You have a big team.
How many point inspection, every bus is inspected, how many points? Do you recall?
Eric would be the one to.
Eric, where's Eric?
Oh, I forgot.
Eric, get up here.
My apologies. This is Eric, I saved the best for last. This is Eric Hudson. He is our lead mechanic and is the lead person responsible for that 100%.
Eric, I'm going to give you the mic and let you talk to folks about how that inspection process works.
Well, they pretty much go over everything from the tires, all the major components. There's a lot of lights, fans, all those items have to work, even the fans on high and low. So there's over 50 different bulbs on the bus. So you can, you know, you take that times the 96 buses that went through and any of those could be a failure. So we, I want to thank the guys that worked for me in the shop. You know, they're the ones that are behind the scene when that's going through and really work hard to make that happen.
It's no small task and I think Kent, I've heard you say this several times, it takes a team to pull that together and you've certainly got a great one over there.
We do, we do.
Dave, appreciate, Dave went.
I'm still here.
Okay, there you go. Appreciate everything you and your team's done. We have a plaque here from the Missouri Department of Elementary and Secondary Education. It says that the Missouri Department of Elementary and Secondary Education hereby recognizes and commends the Joplin School District for its exemplary school bus maintenance program as evidenced by compliance with 100% for one-year passage of Missouri School Bus Regulations and Safety Standards during the spring 2012 school bus inspection conducted by the Missouri State Highway Patrol. And I just, on behalf of the district and the parents who put them in your care every morning and wait for those kids to get off the bus every night, me being one of those parents, I want to say thank you for your good work and taking care of our kids. So I know there's a lot of work that goes into it from training to dispatching to fixing buses, disciplining kids, and keeping things moving in the right direction and certainly appreciate everything you guys have done. So Eric, even though you're the last one called up here, I'd like to give you this on behalf of the district and say thank you for your good work. Thank you. Thank you, I appreciate it. I think Kelly's going to want to probably get a picture of you guys.
Approval of the agenda.
Say it again.
Motion by Annie, second by Phil. And a discussion? Please vote.
Yes.
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 And yes. Superintendent reports.
Okay, we've got a lot of things going on in the district. We've had a great start to the school year and I think the transportation effort that went on last year related to kids that lived out of district and trying to keep them in our schools plays a huge role into what Angie's about to talk about, which is student enrollment for the 2012-2013 school year. We have some good news to report and a great PowerPoint that she's going to show you that clearly shows how we've done the last several years and where we were last year as compared to where we are now. So Angie, I'm going to turn it over to you.
Okay, I do just want to give a quick enrollment report. Enrollment is one of the indicators that as we hear from people from FEMA and all of those kinds of things, that they're shocked about our enrollment after a disaster. And so that's been a big news story. And so as we continue to see this trend, I think it's probably a really good thing. I've got, the last two years, really kind of the 2011 numbers are from September, so they're really after Labor Day. The 2012 numbers are from today. So these are the most recent numbers that we could have as far as the number of kids who are enrolled and have been in school and have shown up and all of that. And so you can see that there's some schools that are up and some schools that are down here and there. But as a district at the elementary level, we're up by 131 kids. So that's kind of nice. We've had to add some kindergarten teachers, so that's been something we've been working through. You know, every year, we kind of try to be as lean as we can and then make sure that we make some adjustments if we get a big group of kids come through a school or something. And so that gives you a good feel then for the schools and where our kids are that way. At Irving, you can see there's a big jump. And so I don't know what happened at Irving. We probably need to ask Debbie Fort what happened to Irving, but although there was some moving around of the ESL programs and the ESL programs have impacted some of those schools and I believe that Irving is one of those.
Irving is one of those.
And so that's ascending school for that group. Then at the middle school and the high school levels, these are the numbers that we're at. You'll notice some big growth again, 51 kids at the middle school total in a gain and then 28 kids when you consider both flex and night flex and all of that with the high school. And so overall, we're continuing to see some growth. As a district, just a quick five-year glimpse, you can kind of see we were just at that 7,600 mark, you know, pretty much in September. Then we dropped way down to the 733, which seems like way down, but for all of us was a huge celebration post a disaster that rips through a third of your town. And then we're up by 210. So we're getting really close to being back to number wise where we were. And we think this is significant and a great celebration point for our community. It says that as a whole community, not just as a school, we're doing a lot of things right. And we can see that in our community and those are things as we drive through and see houses and we celebrate those things that it sometimes takes an important point to just stop and realize it's really going to be all right. It's going to be good and we'll be back. And so this is a great indicator.
And as you all know, you sat in on a lot of those meetings, but we had a lot of conversations about what can we do to keep our families here in Joplin. We talked about that a lot. That started with the opening of summer school on time last year in July. It started with, excuse me, June, I apologize, but having the extended summer school that went through the month of July to provide supports for our families, starting school on time August 17, providing winter camp, providing transportation, providing for basic needs and supports, mental health services. We wrapped our arms around these families and did everything we could to keep them here. And that effort's paid off and I think it's really showing up this year. So you know, can't say enough for the work of our staff and everything that they've done over the last 15 months to keep our families and keep Joplin whole. So I'm as proud as anybody and I know you guys are too, the work that's going on to make that happen. But those are good numbers and something we can certainly celebrate. And even though we probably should have expected another little bit of dip this year in enrollment, it didn't happen and we beat the odds one more time. So we're going to stay after it. I fully suspect that in a couple of years, as things come back, I wouldn't be surprised to see that bar move beyond that 7,700 mark. It's going to be an exciting place to be. We're going to have some beautiful schools and some beautiful new places for families, affordable housing for families to move back into and live. And this is going to be a bright spot in the Midwest and people are going to move here. So it's pretty exciting.
Do we know, Angie, on the past, we've had, I know there's enrollments that we still have people enrolling up until the day after Labor Day.
Right. That's why this, that's why I was saying that we're comparing today's numbers with numbers from after Labor Day in the other years. And I just felt like that I wanted to make sure that we were, you know, getting that and we pulled five years' worth of data. And so I just pulled it from the September board packet because we typically met at the beginning of September of those years. And so that's why I made that decision to compare it that way. So in actuality, the number could actually even be more and go up. I would anticipate that it would, but it's still strong, strong data.
I heard, I was talking to one of my neighbors who's a secretary and she was walking last night saying they were still having enrollments at their school yesterday.
Oh, yeah.
So, yeah.
They're still coming and they will continue to trickle in and then we'll level out a little bit then after Labor Day and we'll kind of probably have a little bit better feel, but this is, this is good. So Paul likes it whenever we have more, you know, this way that that means more money and then we're doing more efficient with the busing and so that's, that's good too. So we're trying to help.
Cool, thank you. Sorry, my screen keeps going to sleep. Report on the Kaboom Playground project. We have Jason Cravens here, is going to talk to us a little bit about what Kaboom is all about and as he's getting settled in, you probably were aware of the big project that took place, Old Roy Wood Building last week, a very exciting project. Really appreciate Jason taking the lead on that. That was no small undertaking, very similar format as to what it takes to do one of those extreme home makeovers in terms of volunteers and the organization. And Jason took that project on amongst all his other responsibilities and hats he wears. He wore a very unique hat that day that hopefully we have some pictures of.
I've already seen this.
But just to kind of give you a little bit of background, I got an email, I don't know when it was, I want to say it was probably, I'd say early, early spring, January, February, March timeframe. And it was from a lady by the name of Karen Duncan. And Karen Duncan is one of the top executives in this not-for-profit group called Kaboom. And they build playgrounds, that's what they do. They're a not-for-profit group that builds playgrounds in communities that need playgrounds. And she just also so happens to be Secretary Ernie Duncan's wife. And that's how the connection was made and we got to visiting and I think this is probably one of several projects they're going to do. And again, appreciate Jason's hard work in making that all come together. So Jason, I'll let you tell a little bit about the story and how it all turned out.
All right. Well, it happened, there's a team of people behind the scenes. They were like, there's eight committees and each committee had a chair or two running that. So those committee members know who they are, that they put in at least an hour a week on a conference call and that was just to, for communication purposes. And then tons of times past that, getting donations, rounding up volunteers, making sure that there is recyclable garbage cans, that's a contradiction, I know, but just making sure everything was set up. And so just a lot of hard work behind the scenes. I did want to recognize, you know, the Kansas City Chiefs and the Hunt family and then Kaboom, but there were also some local places that donated. I did want to give them some recognition now during that time. G&amp;H Ready Mix, Kidova, Panera Macallister, St. Paul's Church, Woody Smokehouse, Lions Club, Cliff Star and Coke all made donations. And then a huge part of it, Brandon Hankins with CK Construction, Meg Born with Art Feeds, and then hundreds of volunteers. And with that, it really just came together. I was nervous that morning. I wore my best hat to keep the shade off, but honestly, it really came together there in the afternoon. Everything just folded together. So it was, it was a really neat project. I can tell you this from being there on build day, if I ever do any home construction or build, I'm going to have Mike Landis and Annie Sharp there helping me out. Mike was like Thor with the sledgehammer. He was just hammering. I was like, okay, don't mess with Mike Landis. And then Annie is, she never stopped, so it was awesome.
Wait, she never stopped? Did she lay her camera down?
Yeah, she was, she was raking. She was doing everything.
Wow.
As a matter of fact, she was my go-to. I'd be like, hey Annie, I need someone to rake. Hey Annie, I need someone to guard this playground set and make sure no one sits on it. So.
She was rolling out the gray carpet to start off with.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, Dr. Bessett, they were rolling out the carpet.
We can roll out with the best of them.
Yeah, Dawn was there. Dawn was actually the photographer that day. She was snapping lots of pictures.
Wow, two photographers on board.
I think the best part is when the kids came out with that ribbon that had the hands on it.
Yeah.
The ribbon cutting, that made the whole day, I mean, just that quick, it's like, oh, the kids are here. I did have an interesting moment as I was leaving to go to a meeting. I was standing at the building, looking back at the end of it. And on my, on my left side was the front of the building, the south side, and there was a class out there and they had a ball and a couple of frisbees. And then on the right side, here's this playground that is just emerging from the ground. And it was such a before and after picture, you know, because these kids have not had a playground and now they do. And it was just, I knew at that point, it's just so great to be in Joplin because our community loves kids and it was wonderful.
And it wasn't just our community. I met people from Webb City and Carthage and there were a lot of people from the region that came in to support that build. And I know Susan was here to share her story with this group. I know she was deeply touched by that, pouring in support and the fact we were able to get a playground on that site for her kids. for her kids that desperately needed one. So again, appreciate Jason's hard work on that. It was a great project and a great addition. And I'm estimating probably about a $30, $35,000 project. Did you ever hear any numbers on that?
Well, I thought it was actually more than that. I thought it was up for like 70 to 80 on total project cost.
And East Morlins PTO?
Yes. Our PTOs were, they were the committee members, incredible workhorses. East Morlins, Aaron was awesome. And just, we had a lot of good people all the way around.
We had our building and grounds folks there also.
Kent Larson, buildings and grounds people.
I think Eric was there keeping the cement thing going.
Yeah. There were so many, the reason I'm throwing out a lot of names is because I would leave someone out because there were that many people involved. But there were so many people that were just crucial to making it happen. I know Tracy's got a really cool video also showing. And I was over at Beacon this morning. It was really neat. They were playing four-square. So it was pretty neat to see them playing because the parking lot got painted as well. So they have some more games than just kickball, which I think was what they were limited to last year.
Jason, I don't know if you knew it, Friday night during NFL preseason game, that halftime, it showed everything from Kaboom from Joplin.
Oh, that's awesome.
That was the interview with Dr. Huff. Everything for the preseason at halftime was shown from Joplin. And they interviewed the ones that came down here. It was pretty cool from everybody that told me, yeah, pretty neat.
It was a neat day. So thanks for the opportunity.
Appreciate. And Jason, we got, I got a whole bunch of team members to just jump on whatever needs to be done. And Jason's certainly one of those people that steps up when we need him to step up. So appreciate you taking the time to do that project. Thank you.
Thank you, Jason.
Next, we talked a little bit about MAP testing and EOCs prior to the board meeting and the work session related to establishing some district goals. We're going to get into it a little deeper tonight around state assessment results. And Terry Hart is here to share with you some of her thoughts and some of the research she's done on the data and kind of give you an overview of where we're at.
Actually, Angie and I are going to, we're going to tag team this. So she's going to start, and then I'll get in with the actual, when we dig into the data.
Okay. We've talked several times about the annual performance report, No Child Left Behind, and AYP, and all those kinds of things. So I'm going to give you a quick review. So if Tracy will give us a click.
Annie, this was made specially for you.
This is for you, Annie.
This is a prezi.
A prezi. So No Child Left Behind is the federal law that says we all have to have all of our kids totally proficient by 2014. Missouri was a receiver of the waiver from that accountability for this year, first time.
Which just happened in the last three weeks, probably four, maybe the most.
Just really right there at the end of summer. And so that meant the letters that we used to have to send out that say different kinds of things, that we don't have to send those this year. So that's a nice thing. The state has the IMSIP accountability. And so essentially, what the federal government said was, with some minor tweaks that the state did, that they're going to use IMSIP instead. And so we'll just click the next piece.
Oh, isn't that cool?
Aren't you proud? Annie's been wanting a prezi at a board meeting, and so now we have had one. Thanks to Terry. The Missouri School Improvement Plan is IMSIP. And that's how Missouri does their accreditation process for schools. And so every year, annually, every school district is given an annual performance report, and that was included in your board packet. And it has 14 standards, and you either meet or don't meet those standards. And so the APR, as we refer to the annual performance report, is something that every school district has on their, on Desi's website. And you can go and look. It holds us accountable for the MAP and end-of-course exams. It holds us accountable for the ACT scores, graduation rate, college placement, and then career education courses and placement that way. We received 13 out of 14 points. Last year, you'll note that we received 12. And so that was used to, they'd give accredited with distinction. And I'll tell you the minute they're not going to do that anymore. But 13 out of 14 would give you accredited with distinction. And so that's, that's important to just know. But we did receive 13 out of 14 points. One of those was from a bonus point for our voluntary end-of-course exams. And so those aren't, we're not held accountable for some subjects. We're only held accountable for math and common arts. But the other subjects, we did well enough on to receive the bonus point, which is good news. We did not meet two of the standards. Graduation rate is one of those. And I think that's not a surprise to anybody at this point. And then the No Child Left Behind subgroups, and we've talked about that many times, about how a district our size has so many more subgroups to be held accountable for that it's different. And so we do have some good news in that. And Terry, you know, will have some information on that as well. And so as we continue on, we do have the categories that the MAP and the EOC are testing, does the student achievement test, they were all met with status points. And the importance of that is that in the state of Missouri, they're trying to find ways for schools to be able to meet these standards. And so there are many multiple ways that you can do that. You can do that by having high achievement all by itself. You can do that by having good achievement and making some gains. You can do that by kids making gains and closing the gap in the achievement, you know, that way. And so we're really proud of the fact that in our areas for the six standards for the MAP, at the three through five grade level, the middle school grade level, and the high school grade level, we were able to meet that standard with status points alone, which means that we were able to meet it by having high enough scores. So even though you saw in the paper that we had a little dip in scores, that's still, those scores are still high enough. And so our teachers and our students did a fantastic job. And we want to be sure that even when you see those little dips, that you know where we stand in relationship to other things. And so that was good news. The state allows, you know, different ways to have met. So different school districts can meet that in different ways. We're proud that we met that in the high level by just status points. And you can also look on the APR report in your board packet. And the second column says status points on the first page, and it says H160. H1 means that that's a high level. That's the highest area that you can get. So you can get rated as a high one, a high two, or an average, a below average, or a floor. And so those are kind of guidance for us to help us know whether we should be focusing on that area, or we're sitting pretty good in that area. So for grades three through five, math and communication arts, we're at a high one. At the middle school, which is an area we've really been focusing on, we're at high two now in both of those areas. And so that's a great, a great thing. We're really proud of that. And then on our status for the grade level EOCs, we're at the high two for both of those at the high school level. And so I think our teachers did a phenomenal job, especially with all the things that they had to work with. And so we'll click on through. Then I think this is where we talk about accredited with distinction. You know, that was a big deal for a long time. And the state has realized that their criteria, they're not satisfied with it, and they are doing away with that for two years as we transition from this way of being accountable called IMSIP four to a new way of being accountable called IMSIP five. So I'll be telling you soon about IMSIP five and how there will be different kinds of things. I think we'll get some preliminary information for that in December. And so we'll get a little bit of, if we were held accountable for IMSIP five, this is where we fall in December. But it won't even begin to take place until the following year.
On IMSIP five, Angie and, I mean, Annie and I and Mike and some others that went to Missouri School Board Regional Meetings at one time, and they discussed it and some of the changes that was taking place. Do we feel more comfortable about it now than what we did a year ago?
That's a great question. The answer is, the answer is yes and no. Honestly, there are some areas that we feel very comfortable about, that they're doing some things, actually some of the things that we were doing last year on how you look at attendance and how you look at some things. But in other areas, we're kind of still going, okay, we'll do this. But we don't think that this maybe is the most fair way to do that. And so it's a little bit different. It's a mixed bag.
Jim and I, we went to that meeting, and it was mixed bag, wasn't it?
Yes, yes, yes.
She brought that group together, and we absolutely didn't accept the free stuff because sometimes free stuff isn't exactly what you need. And the teachers all were really excited about the opportunity for the ones that were piloting.
In fact, the company that approached us was a third-party company who was doing, they were conducting a study for the U.S. Department of Education. And so I said, you know, we needed to make sure that those, if we were considering adoption, were those the items that we would have, that a committee of teachers would have picked out of what was available, and it actually was not. And so they didn't, they had no idea which reading items or which company was involved with that study. They knew the, the background of why they were there, but they didn't know. And so it was even a blind demonstration for them.
Is that part of the program? Is it geared towards one grade level, one school?
No, Royal Heights Elementary. Actually, the whole elementary school is piloting one set. Brandy Landis is also piloting a set. And then there are two kindergarten teachers at West Central and a teacher who will be teaching third, fourth, and fifth grade reading at West Central, and a teacher at Columbia who teaches third, fourth, and fifth grade reading. So I wanted, and it's a mixture of both so that we can see, do they have the supports we need at those lower levels, as well as help the students to continue the love of learning as they get into those higher levels. So it's a mix of both. We all are aware of the challenges that we had last year. We had lots of different things going on in the district, the one-to-one implementation at the high school. We've got Common Core standards coming. We've got some teachers who have already switched to Common Core standards because the set of students that they are teaching right now will never experience a MAP like our current students who have to take it. So for instance, our kindergartners next, our kindergartners from last year who are now first graders, when they get in third grade, they will be the first set of students to take the next generation of assessments that are aligned to the Common Core standards. So we've had switches like that going on. Common Core standards will call for teachers to take a completely different approach to teaching mathematics and reading. So we've got professional development going on for those kinds of things, and teachers needing to balance between the grade level expectations and Common Core standards. So we just wanted, and of course, the emotional support after the tornado. So in light of all of that, I think we do need to be proud of our students and our teachers because they did work very hard last year.
Anything, Terry?
Can we go back to that one slide about six back?
I do think that's a great process.
She's lying. Don't even go there.
We can.
I do think that's a great process, how we bring our staff in to evaluate programs because they're the ones going to be out in the trenches doing it. You know, it's easy for you guys to sit here and look at textbook and curriculum, say, well, I think this is good, but.
Well, it'd be really easy to just take what's free, you know. And if it's not what's best for our kids, we're not going to do that.
And surprisingly, the, you know, the teachers, they were surprised that the one that was supposed to be part of the study, they were surprised that they were real, that was really, they thought I was joking with them, that I was trying to pull a prank. They were like, no.
Now, is this something that they're going to do all, when will you get back with them to know the results? I'm going to wait the whole school year.
Well, I will constantly be in and out of their classrooms this whole year. In fact, at Kelsey Norman, one of the teachers is piloting one of the programs, and then Brandy Landis is piloting the other. So their, their goal, or that I've given them, or their mission for the years, to observe one another so they get to know that other program just as well as they know the one they're teaching and they're going to be journaling. And then I will actually bring them back together probably midsemester, or mid, at semester, and I'll expand that, the committee. And we will come in, and I'll have that company come in and demonstrate both of those programs again for the expanded committee. And then I will let those, the expanded, the people who have been added, know who in the district is piloting that, so they can go observe and see it in action with our students. And so then towards the end of the year, we'll make the final decision.
Is there quite a bit of technology with the name?
With one of them, there's more with one than the other. The one that does require more technology is already part, it's the same program that we already use for our math. And so it's just an add-on to that, and the teacher's already in there and have been adding classes and students. And so it would just be an add-on to that.
Cool. Anybody, any more questions, Terry? Thank you, Terry.
Great job.
She's doing a wonderful job leading our curriculum. It's really more alive for our teachers than ever.
Okay. We're up, now we have Archie and Mike here to give us a construction update. A lot of things going on.
You mentioned the governor earlier, being in town.
Yeah.
Did you want to elaborate on why he was here?
Yeah, the governor was in town yesterday to do a roundtable discussion with some high school students to talk about schooling, what's going on in their school career, and in particular, as they plan for, plan for college, you know, how they're going to use A-plus funding, what, you know, they talked a lot about AP and dual-credit courses, and just had a good back-and-forth discussion about, you know, their experiences, expectations, future plans, and so on. So it was a, it was a nice dialogue. Okay, Archie?
Thank you very much, Dr. Huff. This evening, I brought a couple of, a couple of our team members with us tonight. To your far left is Jason Bishop. He is our lead project manager for the Irving Elementary School and the East Middle School Projects. In the middle immediately next to Jason is Rex Anderson. He's our lead field, or project manager for the Franklin Tech Center and Joplin High School Project. And what we're going to do tonight is, I guess I've asked them to come in to give you some details about each of the projects and the progress we've made over the last month and what we expect to see take place over the next month. And, but before we get to that, I did want to give you just a brief snapshot of kind of where we are, big-picture-wise. Everything's going very well on each of the sites. If you've been by each of them, you've probably seen a lot of site work, a lot of work taking place, maybe that's not real noticeable to the eye because we're doing some work that's below grade and things to prep for coming up out of the ground. But we're really at a point right now where we're looking to take that next step and move out of the ground and start building, building up out of the ground for things that are more noticeable for everyone to see. And to help us get there, we do have a number of items in front of you tonight that are on your consent agenda. And those are contracts that we're seeking approval for so that we can move forward with the construction process and make sure that we stay, stay on task. Each of the contracts that are before you tonight are contracts that we reviewed cost with both the district and the architects to make sure that we're getting good value for each of the contracts. And they're also contractors that are on the critical path, which means we need those contractors to start actively tackling the work that's in front of them to make sure that we're meeting our end goals for each of the, each of the projects. But that's for Irving and for East Middle School. So if, as you go through those, you have any questions, please let us know. One other thing that I wanted to update you on was our progress on Joplin High School. The design team's been working very hard on the design for that project, and we're to another critical milestone on that project where we're going to have the foundations and structural packages that are going to be completed here by the end of the month by Corning Greer and Associates. And then we're going to be putting those out onto the streets so that we can secure bids and get approval on that in time to match up with where the dirtwork and the site utility guys are so that we can keep construction moving towards, you know, our completion date in fall of 2014. So with that, I think I'll turn it over to Rex and give a brief update on what's going on in the high school.
Well, to follow up on some of your comments currently that we have in place is with Emory SAP, which was a real blessing for us and then shared on to definitely the district that they, they were awarded all five of the contracts, the site demolitions, the site utilities, as well as the mass excavation. So that's really an aid for that contractor to be able to coordinate between themselves in lieu of various different contractors so they can kind of do it at their pace and organize the work. So that's, that's really going to benefit the So that's, that's really going to benefit the project as a whole for that first package that we've put out. Currently that they have in place is they've started the site utility work. We received and reviewed, received some of the pre-cast utility structures that have arrived on the site. They're currently installing the sanitary sewer system. And we'll continue to push dirt in far into late spring of next year is probably how long their scope of work will take to moving dirt around. So, at one point, there was, you know, we couldn't see what's currently undertaken on the project, but now you, if you drive by today along Twentieth Street, you can definitely see progress underway. From the local utilities, Empire Electric has completed their overhead electrical work. American, Missouri American Water, if I've said that correctly, they will be completing their work at the end of the year and the, or end of the day tomorrow. And it backfed that system, which is, we're going to reap the benefits of that because we had to originally, as we bid the project, complete the water system prior to beginning the other state. So the utilities drove the project. They, we still have the utilities that are run through the middle of the building. However, we're able to start a lot more activities sooner than had anticipated by American, or during, the water system has backfed that system and, and kept it. The project itself is separate from the rest of the community in a sense.
Did you guys also recycle all the asphalt from the roads and parking lots? Majority of that go to a local company?
Currently, right now, some, they are working with local guys of doing some certain haul-offs. Some of the materials can actually be utilized onsite in the deep fill excavated area, or deep fill areas. So that also is a benefit to the district that we save some costs in hauling materials and disposing them, you know, with, by the authorities having local jurisdiction on the proper means of disposal. So, being able to waste that material onsite was a savings was passed on to the district. And with that, then we've got AT&T just about ready to get underway. Just about the negotiations been completed with those folks and we're waiting on, currently waiting on when they anticipate starting their work. So, it's been, hit the, hit the ground running. It's been a great start.
And right now, you know, we're, we're trending towards having the first of our building pads ready by the end of, by the end of October and looking to start footing shortly thereafter. Jason?
On, excuse me, on Irving, since our last board update, we have completed the fill of the donated material from the Mercy site. We had a location which we had stopped hauling because we came to pad elevation and then we had some other material that we had to have demoed by, door the existing demo contractor and getting some of our other trades on board. As Archie had mentioned, some of the packages that we're recommending for approval for you guys tonight are our site utilities, our site earthwork contractors. So, based on that approval, we'll go out and we'll extend our perimeters of the construction site on Irving, get the fences moved out, relocate the temporary fence that's up there, or the privacy fence that's up there now so that we can extend our building pad out across that drive. We'll get the site utilities going so that we can reroute some of those that are currently in where the building is going to be set. And at the same time, we'll get our, we'll try to finalize the negotiations with the concrete contractor so that we can pursue the reinforcing shot drawings so that at the point where we're finished with the building pad, we'll be able to kind of follow suit with the concrete piers and, and keep the building moving. So, we've still got a little bit more dirt that's going to be, you're going to be seeing over the next couple weeks and, and probably close to a month. But at that point, we're hoping that we can get, hit the ground running with the concrete piers and start getting some construction moving out of the ground. So, that's where we're at on Irving, on East Middle School. A little bit bigger site and so we've got a lot more dirt than we've been moving over the past, past month or so. We're at a point now where the building pad is complete. We've got final elevation where we're ready to start footings. The contractor, Branco, has mobilized at the site. They have got their reinforcing materials located and staged. They commenced this week to site layout. We did get some rain on Monday, but the ground was so dry, kind of absorbed it pretty quick. We've been able to maintain the, the layout. We're anticipating starting digging of footings midweek, possibly tomorrow afternoon and certainly by Friday, we'll anticipate laying or pouring of some concrete footings. There's still going to be a lot of dirt work moving around. We've got some, some grades we've got to cut in the back by the fields. We've got some detention bases that you can notice off of the, the front street. Outside of that, I would hope if we could pursue this reinforcing drawings for the cast and place walls, maybe by the next board meeting, we'll start seeing some forms coming up out of the ground and starting to see some of the building being erected. So, looking to start to see something from the road here pretty soon, so.
That's good.
Cool. Any questions to them?
There's dirt there.
It's pretty cool to start seeing stuff at the high school level. We, we, some of us drive by that Twentieth Street location several times a day, so it's nice to start seeing some dirt being, a lot of dirt being moved now, so.
Well, and I guess I will, I will add that, you know, Rex mentioned that, you know, the, the water lines with it, with it being capped, that's going to allow us to start the building pads earlier than we thought. So we should start seeing a lot more equipment move in there in very short order because we thought we were going to have to wait a few weeks to bring those folks in. But with that, with that twist, it's going to push up our building pad excavation, which is going to be really exciting to get that going sooner.
I hear you have a video about how showing to move dirt?
Uh, very similar to last month, but yes, probably more dirt.
Isn't it the retention point at Irving?
I don't think so. Oh, is there Irving, potential point?
Little one, yeah, it goes through there. Won't be as big as north.
Any questions of Archie in the group? Thank you, guys. Oh, I do, Mike, come up to the table. I got a question for you. He didn't, he didn't, it says on here, Mike Johnson, so I can ask you. I've been having to sign a lot of paperwork for you lately and just kind of get an update of, if you would, of these shelters, the storm safe rooms and stuff, if you would, for the rest of the board?
We do have some news on that.
Okay, cool.
We've, before we can really do any construction work, we can do dirt work without any violations of our FEMA, CIMA guidelines on the community safe rooms. So as we're, you're approving the actual construction work tonight and we're getting ready to start, we received a timely phone call from our CIMA contact that both Irving and East have been approved. We're set up to go up and finalize the grants. Those are completely approved now. That's construction documents, everything. We'll be up in Jefferson City this Thursday at one o'clock for our mandatory briefing and sign the paperwork to consummate those deals. The high school is a few weeks behind. We couldn't wait to do all three because we need to, we don't want them to have to stay off the community safe room areas. So, so that's good news. And now once, and we've asked them to do those in these orders, the three rebuild sites first. And then the other thirteen applications won't be far behind. So, so, so far, everything's kind of fallen into place, so we haven't had any delays in our construction time schedule. So, that's good news.
Yes, it is.
Yeah, I know that I've been coming and signing a lot of things for Brenda that she's got ready for me for construction, so.
You'll have a lot more after these approvals. Those will turn into contracts, which, there's five of each.
I think I signed the other day, I think I've had to sign, what, three hundred and twenty-one times?
That's more to come, much more.
Thank you. Thank you for the update.
Thanks, Mike. Probably the longest superintendent's report I've ever had, so apologize for that. But the rest of the, the rest of the agenda, we'll go, go pretty quickly.
All good stuff.
That's true. President Board Report, I just got a few things. One, you know, I gave everyone of you a picture while ago, and that's from the TOPPS group. It says to the Joplin School Board, thank you for providing lunch for our new teachers at TOPPS on August eighth. We appreciate your support of these new educators and the TOPPS program, sincerely, Joplin TLCs. So we thank them for their work as well.
Our TOPPS program is our, our new teacher orientation to Joplin, so it's, it's a great.
Did you guys change this, this year to go to three days and they'll do two follow-up next year, which I think that's a great idea? Okay.
Cool.
We, last year was the first year for that and the feedback that we got from the teachers who came for the two days this year was amazing.
Great. I like that.
They received those additional two days. They realized made more sense their second year for them as they were heading in than it would of their first year heading in, so.
A lot of times, you don't know what you don't know when you're brand new, so we, it's a, it's a good, good, good process.
Remind the board at the end of September, we have Missouri School Board Association Conference at Tantara. Dawn will have to do her state required training at that time, so.
Sixteen hours.
Sixteen hours.
And we'll also be hosting the regional, regional meeting. I'm sorry, go ahead, and I didn't know if you had that or not.
Well, we're going to do the reg, we're hopeful, we're asking the board if you would like us to host a regional meeting, October the twenty-fifth?
I think that's right. We'll get that date out to you guys.
Yeah, we'll get that date out there, but we would, we would.
Kim's shaking her head, yes.
Twenty-fifth?
October twenty-fifth, so the regional, regional meeting, October twenty-fifth, eleven, eleven-twelfth campus. We're going to host it over there and we'll have some kids involved and do some tours and some things of that nature. But we just got the notification of the opportunity within the last three or four days and that's coming, that's just around the corner, so we've got a lot of planning to do. But we want to, we want to roll out the red carpet for the twelve or fifteen districts in our region that'll be participating in that event. It's a good event.
Last time we did it was South.
It was at South last time. And so, something, we'll, we'll get it, get the official information out to you guys right away and would love to have all the board members there and be a part of that so we can showcase the work that, at that high school and, and, and welcome a lot of the districts in this area to Joplin. Also, I think it gives us a great opportunity to say thank you to regional school districts that provided so, so much support over the last fourteen months.
Definitely.
Mike, you want to, you're going to go represent the board later this month or September?
Uh, yes. Our architects for our eleventh, twelfth grade center are, I think, in the top three in the United States on design of our twelve, eleventh, twelfth grade center for the McConnell Award. So, thank you, Mr. Greer and your firm and DLR, and hopefully they can win that because that'll represent us really well and it's a great accomplishment for their team and us.
That's all I've got is on my report. We didn't have any public comments regarding the agenda items, so I need a motion for, to prove the consent agenda?
So move.
Motion debated by Mike, seconded by Jim. Any questions? Please remember, you've got also a add-on that was given, that was laid at your desk as well earlier. Please vote.
Yes.
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 And yes. Moving right along, I got to see where I'm at now. We've got some much.
We're on the communication program evaluation, regular agenda. Tonight, I've got Kelly here and Kim here to talk about some changes we're making in the way we engage our community. We've been talking a lot about this and this is an important report, given that one of our goals that may, may be approved at the next, in the next month as a district is how we, how we engage our community specifically. And Kelly's done a fantastic job. Kelly has been with us. When did you start, Kelly? September or October last year?
Last September.
Last September, and she hit the ground running. She walked into this very challenging situation and has handled it with great poise and has handled a number of unique media opportunities that not a lot of public relations people get the chance to experience. And, and she and Kim have made a great team and have done some amazing work this year. But now that she's had a chance to get her feet under, she's got a very clear vision for she, where she wants to take our district in terms of how we communicate with our community internally, with our staff and parents, as well as externally with our community at large. So, as well as engaging the media. So we, we're really excited about what we, what we have to present tonight. So Kelly's going to kind of outline where we're at and where we're headed.
Yes, thank you.
First, I would like to say that I misspoke. It's October twenty-third, not the twenty-fifth. Just so you know.
What was that? I'm sorry.
October twenty-third, not the twenty-fifth.
Twenty-third, October twenty-third?
It's the Tuesday.
And they don't have a, do they have a time yet?
They do not have a time set, but that is a regular, regularly scheduled board.
So it'll be a, you know, somewhere between six and eight o'clock, I'm sure, so.
We'll include the information in that board report as well.
Okay.
The weekly.
Well, the primary objective of the Communication Department is to ensure information is being efficiently, effectively, and accurately disseminated to our internal and external constituents. According to the National School Public Relations Association, which we are a member of as Joplin Schools, quality communication district wide is critical to the success of the schools, their programs, and the students they serve. Research consistently shows that students do better when parents and the community are involved, which we all know. A successful communication and community engagement program, one that focuses on listening and sharing, is essential for building trust and creating partnerships with parents and the community. Joplin Schools is committed to open, honest, and ongoing communication with both internal and public audiences using a variety of communication tools. Based on information that was gathered from the board retreat that was held in April, as well as an internal analysis of our current communication practices, we developed several goals with strategies that will allow us to achieve our objective.
And so what we'd like to do today is just go through those goals and what we've included are just some of the exam, some examples of some of the strategies. These are not all-inclusive, but will give you an idea of the direction that we're heading. So one of our first goals is to develop a consistent Eagle brand throughout the district. And we are already well on that path, but there are things that we can do, I think, to improve that over this next year. So some of the strategies that we're going to use over the year. First, we're going to develop and share a consistent templates for presentations, for newsletters, websites, and parent communications. We are going to develop a brand usage guide that we will share with our staff and our partner groups. And what that will do, it will just be a guide to help folks know how to appropriately use our logo. Tips on things like not distorting it or squashing it, and the colors that they need to use, the accurate PMS colors that they need to use. So we're going to share that and help our, our buildings use our logo in a, in a more appropriate fashion. We're also going to perform an annual review of our buildings. And that will just be, we will travel to each building and just kind of take a look at their communication efforts, their actual buildings, their signage, and make recommendations based on that. And what you see up here are just a few snapshots of some things that are representing the Joplin brand. And I think what you see from these photographs is it's not necessarily consistent. So we've got some work that we can do on our signage. We've got a lot of great information out there. Our teachers and our principals do an awesome job of sharing information with parents, but we probably haven't done the best job of sharing with them a consistent brand template that they can use. So, you'll see a parent newsletter that we can provide a template for. A lot of our forms don't necessarily have a consistent look and feel, so we're going to work on that over this next year. Certainly, our website, we can do some improving on and make all of that look more consistent. So my hope is that next year, when we pull up this slide, you will see a very consistent brand image.
Our next goal is encouraging Eagle pride, and I would like to introduce all of you to Eddie the Eagle, who has a Facebook page already. And Eddie the Eagle that you see up here will be the subject of coloring book that we are going to put in the hands of every kindergartner in the district in hopes that we can help promote Eagle characteristics, such as respect and things of that nature. The special thing about Eddie is Eddie was drawn by one of our high school students, and I think this is something that we're most proud of. Senior Jeremiah Jones is an art feeds volunteer and he created the concept of Eddie the Eagle. So you are the first group seeing Eddie in a public format. This will be one of the new traditions that we talk about as the first strategy. We'd like to develop and implement new traditions, one at each level. This will be one that we hope to continue with all kindergartners as they come into the district. We're committed this year to working closer with JEP-14 to co-promote events. As you all know, JEP-14 is a wonderful, wonderful thing that we have in this district. And we realize that it's a resource that we don't necessarily utilize to our fullest extent when we promote events through the Communications Department. So great discussions have already taken place between Danny and Kelly, and I think you'll, you'll see some improvements there this year. And then lastly, expanding, every, every building in the district has a bright futures council at this point. It's comprised of businesses, faith-based organizations, and human service agencies. And we are going to ask them to help us promote Eagle pride in the community, and they can do this in a variety of ways. They can put stickers in their windows. They can use the signs that are outside of their businesses to congratulate.
Already working with the individual principals on how to update their announcement pages so that when folks go to the websites, the information is very accurate and timely. We are in the process of developing a community e-newsletter and you are seeing a draft of that on the screen, the Eagle Minute. And that is something that we would like to put out weekly to our community, and it will be just a slight change to the staff newsletter that we will be putting out. And we will promote that using our social media platforms and with flyers that we will send home with students. So we're hoping to get a really good. a really good group of folks following that newsletter. And then we'll be formalizing a district PTA, and we will work with them to share information.
Our next goal is to work with the foundation to develop an official alumni association. As you all know, alumni associations are very valuable to school districts, K-12 as well as post-secondary, and we believe this is the time for us to move forward with the pride that we've experienced post-tornado, to move forward and bring all of the little groups that are out there together under one umbrella. We plan to work with the foundation, and they are committed to helping us establish a formal program and implement a membership drive as we move forward into this year. Currently, if you would like to find an alumni website, it's a page on our Joplin High School website. We hope to actually create an engaging website for the alumni to participate in and utilize social media platforms to engage them as well. We hope to have an event yearly where we have alumni come back to the district and help support the district. And lastly, as we move into the future, we know it's important to recognize those alumni members that have, have been successful. It's really important to our kids to see that people have gone through the system and become successes in life, so we hope to create an Eagle Hall of Fame.
We had a, a ton of experience this last year with, of course, local, regional, and national media, and we want to continue with those relationships, and so we will continue to work with our media outlets, and there are some, also some things I think that we can do this year. We'd like to coordinate a speaker circuit to make sure that we're visiting with some of our service organizations regularly, and, of course, we will regularly update the media on our rebuilding process, because that will be going on, and that's of a lot of interest to the public, and we will be sending out regular media releases on all kinds of student successes and athletic activities, and we're going to be doing some things this year, taking advantage of some of the programming that's out there, such as KSN's four o'clock Living Well, or making morning appearances on KZRG, we have a lot of opportunities to do that more regularly, and we're going to do that, and we've had some recent success already with that, we heavily promoted the sixth grade academy, and that program went really, really well, and we had a lot of parent, positive parent feedback from that, and that they heard it, not just, you know, from the school, but out in the public. We also heavily promoted our open houses this year at our schools, and they were very well attended, so, and I know that it works, and we will continue to be out there in all the different media outlets sharing the Joplin School story.
There are still national media outlets picking up on Joplin Schools issues, I can still get Google alerts from coast to coast of stories about Joplin Schools and what's going on in our schools, so they're, they're picking up on those stories here locally, and they're publishing them nationwide.
And you may have seen the link, or will see the link to the Sports Illustrated story, they were here this last week doing a story on our football team, and I think we have a ton of opportunities over this next year to engage the national media again, certainly as we open our new schools, so keeping those relationships up and constantly sending them information, I think, will be really important.
The last goal we'd like to share with you this evening is improving internal communications. We all know that staff is our greatest asset, and in the Communications Department, we recognize that and know that it is no different, they are first line, and they are our greatest ambassadors. What we know we need to do better is get the information to them in the many forms that they receive information. Communication has changed so much over the last five to ten years, and there's no one mass medium to communicate with broad groups of people, so we are making sure that we have several different strategies in place that communicate with all of our staff members. As Kelly showed you earlier, our new staff newsletters about ready to debut, we're very excited about it, it's got a great look, and it will have wonderful, wonderful content. District Intranet, many organizations have an Intranet site, and we realize that that is an effective way to communicate with our staff members, so that is something that we're exploring and seeing if we can put in place here in the school district. It's hard to reach all eleven hundred employees on a consistent basis, but this is one way that would allow us to re, to reach a large amount of them at one time. We'd like to implement hosting monthly superintendent's breakfast with staff members, and the purpose of this is to allow Dr. Huff to have access to different staff members on a monthly basis so that they can tell them what they feel is going on in their department, in their buildings, around the district. It makes them feel valued, and it also allows us to figure out what's working, what's not, what communication strategies do we need to change to hit different representative groups of employees throughout the district. Lastly, Christina and Kelly plan on meeting regularly with principals at each of our buildings, and letting them know that we are a resource that is here for them, they don't have to do everything theirs themselves. We are here to offer support, and as Christina and Kelly go in there, they'll help, that will help them determine as they build those relationships, what the individual, unique needs of each building are. We have great staff members, and again, they are the best ambassadors we could ask for, we just need to get the information to them.
Any questions of Kelly and Kim?
I've got one, quick one.
Sure.
So if a billing principal needs to communicate something, are they required to go through you, are they, is it suggested that they go, all communication goes through you and then to the media, or, and they pick up the phone and call the Globe?
For media, it all goes through our department.
Which it should.
Okay, perfect. So any, so if we're going to have some kind of a meeting or an event that goes to you, you publicize it?
Absolutely.
Now, does that, is that all true for band, orchestra, chorus, athletics, speech debate, those kinds of communications?
Everything but athletics, everything but athletics. The athletic department has a really strong relationship with the sportscasters and that side of the business, and they do a really good job. If it's anything that's not really, that's out of that realm, they, they will call me.
Any other questions? Need a motion for this action item?
There's actually, there's no, there's no need to vote on this, this is just FYI, and also, he's a radio role, he's a radio role.
It has an action item on here, so.
But, but I apologize, if you want to vote on it, I'm sure she'd appreciate the endorsement.
It's a great job, a lot of hard work.
They've worked hard, and that's just the tip of the iceberg, I mean, we got, we got a lot of things going on, I, I did want to let you all know that obviously with that, with this plan, there's, there's going to have to be a budget adjustment at some point to make that all reality, and you can't, can't do that kind of work and communicate utilizing the various modes of communication that they have to utilize now, that's so much more complicated than it was even, you know, five, ten years ago, and, and it takes a tremendous amount of manpower and time and effort and resources to make all that, all that work together, and give you kind, guys the kind of image that you want, want our, our school district to have, and to communicate clearly and honestly with our various publics. So there will be a budget adjustment along with some other budget adjustments, as Paul makes some adjustments, as he does every year related to budget, that Paul, is that in September, is it next month you're bringing those, so you'll be, you'll be seeing that, but it's, it's a worth, worthwhile cause, you guys made it very clear during the retreat that, you know, pride, community engagement, all those things are very, very important to you, we want more people involved in, in this effort, and, and the, and the work that we have going on, and Kelly and her team, they'll, they'll make that happen, and, and it's, it's going to be a good thing, good things are going to happen as a result of that effort. I'm already seeing more Eagles, everywhere I go, I see Eagles on business windows and places I don't expect them, and that's always exciting when, when I come up on a business that I hadn't seen one before, and there it is, so there's, there's a lot of pride out there, and we need to capture that energy.
Well, we need that, we're one of the top five employers in Joplin, and the quality of communication needs to be top-notch.
I know several people in the news media outlets, and they're all thrilled that know that they have one contact now, that they know who to contact, and if something comes in, they call back and make sure it's approved through Kelly and it comes through her, so that's the good thing through our media outlets, is that they have one contact.
It really saves them a lot of time, and.
Yeah.
And then, and I have, I know who they would need to talk to, so yes, it's a, it's really working out well.
So is this a program evaluation or not a program evaluation? Or is this a whole new thing?
It, it's not a whole new thing, it's just, it's just an evaluation of what we've done at this point, I wasn't expecting an approval, but if you guys want to vote, again, you're the Board, you can vote on anything you want, so, so feel free, but that wasn't my intent tonight, but if you feel like, feel the need, you feel free.
Good job, ladies, thank you.
Good job, thank you.
Yeah, that's awesome, excellent.
Moving on, accounts payable, it's your turn, Mr. Barr.
Thank you, President Steele, the attached bill list items are for payment of materials, equipment, services, salaries, and benefits in both the instructional and support areas. The administration recommends the Board of Education approve payment of bills in the amount of eight million, four hundred thirteen thousand, five hundred eighty-five dollars, seventy-two cents.
So move.
Motion debated by Mr. Kimbrough, seconded by Mr. Wilcox, and any questions of Mr. Barr? Please vote.
Yes.
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 And yes. Two thousand twelve, two thousand thirteen tax levy, Mr. Barr?
Yes, preceding this meeting, we held our annual tax levy hearing, invited the public to comment on our tax levy as we do every August, published that notice of public hearing in the Joplin Globe some time back. The, the proposed tax levies are calculated as allowed by law based on assessed valuations furnished by Jasper and Newton Counties, and those tax levies, after adopting by the Board, will be submitted by September one to the county clerks for recording. The administration recommends the Board of Education approve the school tax levy in the amount of, total of three dollars and sixty-six cents per one hundred dollars of assessed valuation allocated as two dollars and seventy-five cents in the general fund, zero dollars special revenue, ninety-one cents for the debt service fund, which goes to pay our principal and interest toward our bond issues, and zero dollars for capital projects fund.
Now, your motion?
So move.
Second.
Motion by my maid, my Mr. Landis, seconded by Ms. Sharp. Any more discussion? Please vote.
Yes.
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 And yes.
Thank you.
Discussion items, anybody have anything to bring up?
I just wanted to compliment Ms. Worm on, when we were waiting for the governor to come out of her, the link proof deal, he stopped by our table, we're ahead of the three Ts, Tracy, Tina, and Terry, plus Ms. Worm, and she threw out the preschool concept, just like, he spit like that, and they just jumped right on it to get his attention, so I just wanted to, when you have an official like that, it's kind of nice to have people around you that can.
Jump on and seize it.
Grab their attention pretty quickly.
Well, just as a follow-up, that Lisa and Paul have been working hard with their team to develop a preschool business plan, we're, we're looking at very carefully, so we're, we're working really hard on that, too, so it's just trying to hopefully make, make the plan and the funding all come together at once, it's going to be a challenge, but we, we think we pulled off.
I just want to compliment for her being quick on her feet.
Thank you, I like that.
Anybody else have anything to bring up?
Great game on Friday.
Great game on Friday.
It was exciting, it's been a while since.
They let funny people hang out on the sideline, so.
Kept hoping, but he put me in, but he, it wouldn't, it wouldn't put me in.
They wouldn't let me, it was a nice crowd, it was nice to have that new paved parking lot over there, and.
It was fun, I did.
Well, it was neat, was seeing people hang around after the game and spend time on the field, just visiting, and, and that was fun, it was a nice, nice evening. Got another big game this Friday night, traveling to Parkview, and hopefully we'll see a repeat of that, and we can sweep Springfield and keep on rolling, so, good start.
You have an opportunity to support Eagle Athletics if you're not a subscriber to the Globe, or if you want to upgrade to the Platinum, the athletic department will get a, a bonus if you so choose.
Anything else? Now, your motion to go into closed session?
So move.
Motion by Mr. Flyer, seconded by Mr. Kimbrough, please vote.
Yes.
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 And yes.
Good meeting.
We will meet. There's a conference.